Yes, we can finally start our second town hall meeting. Good evening, everybody, I think everywhere in Europe. It must be almost evening or evening. So we are here in Runby at our headquarters of Badminton Europe. You see a green screen behind us. It's a new technique we are using. Normally you should have had a Badminton Europe background, but this will be for the next time. Welcome to all. We have quite an agenda again today, an agenda again based on all what is strategy points that I will bring and Brian next to me will go on with the operational points. Of course, at the end, there is time for questions from our members. Please feel free to ask some questions. So before that I start with the strategic points, I would like to have some thoughts for all the victims we have at the moment, for the wars that are having place in Europe or within countries of members of Badminton Europe. It's never nice to have a war because you have a lot of victims and within those victims we also have Badminton players. We have friends, we have family of those who are part of our big Badminton family. So our thoughts are also with them. This brings me to a first point. If you can bring on the slide, guys, it would be nice. Those are the policy and strategy points that I would like to elaborate a bit more today. First of all, the framework for players from Russia and Belarus. There has been a survey last time when we were at the European Games, when we did the first town hall and European members participated massively. It was more than 30, almost 40 members that participated. The framework has been discussed within BWF and we have within BWF there was a decision on a general framework, a general framework that under very strict conditions would allow back in Russian players and Belarusian players as from the end of February next year. If I say strong conditions, I mean the criteria that the IOC put forward. But it's quite clear that this is just a general framework that has been decided. So at the moment, BWF together with the CCs is working on an operational framework. And within that framework, that operational framework, still a couple of points are under discussion. Who will pay what? Because you not only have doping, you also have to look into every player if this player is accordingly to the IOC criteria to come in as a neutral player within play. Other things that are still under discussion in this operational framework, it is the participation of Russian and Belarusian players as a neutral player within the European circuit tournaments or within the World Tour circuit from BWF organized within Europe. So this is still under discussion on which criteria you can refuse or you have to accept. Also, how payments can be done if neutral players are entered? As you know, bank accounts have been blocked, but also this is under discussion with the IOC, with the finance director of the IOC. What we discuss also is participation in our European Championships of neutral players. And last but not least, it is as from February, end of February on, the earliest, when players could maybe come in if they can say that every criteria is okay and that they are a neutral player. It is also will there be a boost of points for those players or not? It seems that for this last one, there will be no boost of points from the last meeting we had, but still it need to be confirmed at a BWF board meeting that will be held in the beginning of November in Kuala Lumpur. I think it's 11 or 12 of November, the Saturday, somewhere in that period. So this is the first point that I wanted to address. It is how the works for the framework to allow Russian, Belarusian players back in as neutral players, how this is going. So you see, it's not a decision from today till tomorrow. No, it is carefully studied, the players will be vetted, a lot of things are around this and we want to do it good. Because point of view of majority of our members was clear, we don't want those players back in. So this is why the framework is really important to us. Can we move on to the slide, please, again? Thank you. This one you should have maybe be reading in the notes we sent after the board meeting we had in Copenhagen along with the World Championships organized by Badminton Denmark and Badminton World Federation. And namely that in June, we have organized our last European Club Championships. They were organized by the Spanish Badminton Federation in Oviedo and we had an Italian champion coming from Sardinia. It was a discussion, quite a long discussion in the board, but finally we decided to discontinue and no longer go on with the European Club Championships because the investment was not worth the outcome. We had not enough top players participating. And so it makes place for other things in the calendar and that's also a good thing. If you say, yeah, but this is a major championship that is gone, it's correct. But if you look into the number of tournaments, circuit tournaments, yeah, also juniors, but also our circuit tournaments, how many tournaments or which increase we had in the last five years? Well, we are over the 100 tournament. So we think that there is still a lot of opportunity for our players to play. The slides or I just go over to the next point. You could also read, I hope, in those notes that there will be a new procedure for the travel support. When I discussed with quite a few of you members in the beginning of this year, I heard that it was too unilateral how the travel grants were given. Well, we will go now to a more solidarity program for travel support, meaning that there will be a staggered approach for travel grants. We will look where the activity will take place and those coming from the far ends or where the tickets are more expensive, well, we will compensate at a higher rate. The pot of money that is available for the event will stay the same, with it will be a solidarity principle, how we will divide this. I think this was a question for quite a long time from you members to reorganize this in a certain way. I come to my next point. It are the board responsibilities. As you could also read in our notes, but also within a communication of Badminton World, Emma Zwiebler decided to not re-seek elections next year. She will take another professional and highly demanding job as from the 1st of November and her term was ending or is ending next year in 2024. So therefore she will not re-seek election. This means that there will be a spot, minimum one spot, available without a board member that is not re-seeking an election. This has also consequences, consequences, I think positive consequences, for the BWF boards. Because Emma resigned already out of the BWF board, but we had a permission from this board to replace her next year. Replace, meaning there will be an election for an additional or replacement of Emma within the BWF board and this only for one year because the terms of the actual BWF board members goes to 2025. You know also that there are quota for BWF. We are nine European board members at BWF. Three of them, 30%, must be, or one-third must be in gender. So three women, minimum. So Emma will need to be replaced by a female candidate next year within the board of BWF. So this is a vacancy that will also be open next year. Because we are talking about BWF, there is a change towards the dates. It's not yet decided exactly which date it will be. It will be most probably 26, 27 of April in Chengdu, China. Normally it was one month later in May, but now it will for the coming years also be and always be the end of April. And this means that our own annual delegates meeting has been moved to May and those dates were already announced. But I'm happy to repeat and to say thank you again to the Hungarian Badminton Federation. We will organize this end of May, the 24th and 25th of May in Budapest. We are almost there for the strategic and policy points. We have also some organizational changes here within the Badminton Europe office. It has been quite long discussions within the HR group of Badminton Europe and afterwards during a information meeting end of September. And I'm happy that today we could inform all the collaborators, all the personnel of Badminton Europe staff, almost everybody because Centre of Excellence was not yet informed about new, a new policy of flexibility at work. So there will be a couple of days of home working in. There will be salary adjustments because we think with an organization as this that we need to keep our people longer in the office and that with the quality we have already in the office and with the new ones coming up, that we also need a bit more experience maybe coming in and so that we are really ready to tackle the future. That's an important one. And this brings me to the last point. It is our strategic plan that we will discuss. We will have for this a strategic meeting initially foreseen in France, but in Rennes during the French Open, but it gave some difficulties with the location. So we moved it to Brussels. It will be the last weekend of this month. We will be in Brussels 27, 28 and the 29th of October, where we will with the board and the senior management discuss the strategic vision for Badminton Europe in the coming years. To do this, we are really pleased that Gregory Reporten, one of the former presidents of Badminton Europe, as you know, actually living in the States, but who is a specialist in strategy, that he will help us. He will come over to Brussels and he will set the framework during three days so that we can have a strategic plan or at least all the ideas and in a priority to go forward. We also contacted 10 stakeholders where almost all of them have answered so that we know stakeholders being our commercial partners on one side and member associations at the other side so that we also know what they would like to see Badminton Europe to go doing in the future. Of course, it will not be a 360 change, no, because it would give us the same pot, neither a 180, yeah, but there will be changes for sure. And we listen to you there. I think also the 10 points in my strategic vision were already giving a direction on how to go. I received also a question from a few of you regarding the commissions. As you know, we have committees within Badminton Europe committees. It are the board members that are part together with the senior management. We also have commissions. I decided to stop the commissions because the outcome was not good enough for all the groups. But the added value of stakeholders from the members participating in the commissions, we don't want to lose. So after the strategic meeting, we will for different areas, we will put priorities and so we will have new commissions that will be there for one year or two years depending on the subject. And so we will create new commissions, maybe called ad hoc working groups to help us to define how to go forward with some strategic key areas, some strategic key directions we want to take. So this concludes my part, my first part regarding strategy and policy information that I wanted to share with you. Brian?
Over to me.
Yes.
Thank you, Sven. Well done. That was a lot of information. Great. I'll see if I can live up to that. Maybe my very brief slide on the screen, just to tell you what I'm going to take you for is a little bit what's happening in the functional areas of the office in the administration, communication, the development department and within the events. And I only need the slide once and then you'll have to look at my face and hear my voice for a few minutes. Administration, first of all, I would like to thank the board for the intervention and you know, trying to look at how we can improve working conditions here in the office, adding additional flexibility to the staff, looking at the minimum salary levels. I think that was well needed and so, yeah. So what I was saying was that we have in the events team, we employed Katy Carmen Kale, who came actually from the Estonian Federation, our new events officer, who's been with us for a little bit over months and has made a really good start. We had some changes in the communication team as well. So Thomas Fuchs, the communication manager left. Also our interns period ran out, Joanna. So we have Gaia in to replace Joanna, let's say our next communication addition to the team. We also have a new communication officer, Lukas Aktor, who comes in with a lot of experience in video production, which is something that we can make very good use of and that we also seen the benefits of today. So thanks to Lukas, also thanks to Semek, who is here helping us also with some of the graphics and the nice background.
What is on now?
Yeah. Besides that, we have an advert out at the moment also for a communication manager. And I'll come back a little bit to that on the communication in a short while. Else, maybe interesting to report to you that Jimmy Jakob and myself, we went to the BWF CC meetings in September. And BWF is undergoing currently also a strategic review and a lot of the talks we had there, both in the form of development and in events, was about, let's say, the overall objectives and the cooperation areas between BWF and the CCs. So very overall discussions on strategy which will materialize into a strategic plan and next year is going to be a lot more talking about how do we achieve on the objectives and KPIs and those thoughts. So it's a lot more, let's say, practical next year. This year was like the overall direction that was discussed, but good and interesting meetings facilitated by BWF. Let me move to the communication area. Here, I mean, I think the big thing at the moment is that we have a website tender out. At the moment, I'm having conversations with companies that are showing interest in building our digital platform. And actually, we have quite an intensive interest and I had a lot of good conversations at the moment already. The deadline for companies to formally submit their proposals is 1st of November and the month of October is used to talk with them so they understand our expectations for a new digital platform. For the communication team itself, it's been busy August suddenly with the World Championships, the European Under-17, back in July, summer school, we also had communication staff going there. And with a small breather in September, we are now starting again a busy period with the World Tour tournaments in Finland, in Denmark, in France and in Germany, which will all be visited by one or more of our communication staff. As I mentioned, we are looking for a communication manager. Before he or she will join with the team, we have already started to look again on what are we trying to achieve within the communication area, revisiting our, let's say, internal strategy to see how we can optimize our efforts, our different social media and website in anticipation of the new website going live sometime middle of next year. That was communication development. Busy summer as always, but a good summer with the summer school, very successfully organized, regional projects, we had a number of those over the summer as well. And the COE was extremely busy, working at over capacity during the summer. We had another change of personnel which relates to development, but it's not new people, at least in the office here. We have taken in Jerome Van Dyk again as the development manager. So he was here in the office previously, but has been six years at the COE, working as the head coach. So we replaced him with Vita from Canita, who was from Lithuania, so a coach to take over from Jerome, while, well, not really take over, but I mean, joined Dennis at the centre, Dennis Christensen, who actually was the one taking over as head coach at the COE then with being assisted by Vita. So Jerome has come back to the office and is helping Jakob and working together with Mike Harmon and Tommy in the development area. Another project that is now slowly coming to an end is our advanced coach education project that is, was an EU project, Rasmus funded. We are at the, we finished basically the education for our 16 participants and at the moment they are doing their final assignments and receiving feedback on those. And then we are also working on the website, on a lot of the video content that has been filmed during the four courses that we have had over the last year. And here, it's also, I'm happy to announce, I think probably you heard it maybe before, but we have actually had approval of another EU project which is in the area of retention and recruitment. So more of a grassroots project in those two areas, how we can get more kids mainly to play Badminton, but also how we can retain kids in the sport. So I really expect a lot from that project. I'm really happy that we again will receive substantial EU funding to develop concepts around retention and recruitment in Badminton. Within development, we also had now this month, actually just last week, World Academy of Sport courses held in Glasgow in Scotland, both in terms of administration and events. And as far as I heard the feedback here, very successful courses held for those two areas. This is probably not going to be me, I'll probably be forgetting something because I mean, I think it's quite a lot of things that we're doing. There might be a few more things that we're also doing. So remind me if I'm forgetting a thing or two, but I think the overall, you get the overall drift about all the activities that's going on here in the office. One thing I wanted to say is also that we are preparing currently the level three course that will take place, I think in November up in the Centre of Excellence. But let me move to the events area. Here we have another tender out, which is quite exciting. So we have put a tender out for a tournament management system that is supposed to help tournament organizers basically to manage many aspects of tournaments, not a replacement of tournament software because we are not really at the moment looking into like draw functionalities and also scheduling and these kind of things. But we are more looking into a system that can help organize tournaments when we talk about hotel bookings, technical officials, transport and training courts and a number of those kind of, you know, areas that often are organized in Excel sheets. And we would like to see if we can offer a digital system that caters for those elements. So also an area where we having quite a few very interesting conversations at the moment with interested companies. Going back, we had the European Under-17 Championships in Lithuania. We are currently, back in August, we are currently organizing with several hosts the European Men's and Women's Team Championships qualification, which will be played in the first week of, or around from 7 to 10 of this December, I believe in eight locations leading up to the finals, which will be held in Poland in February 24. And we are also in a good dialogue with the organizers in Subruk in Germany for the European Championships in 2024 as some of the, let's say, key events that are coming up. Besides, of course, all the circuit work where Katy Carmen is at the moment, getting ahead around everything with all the lead circuit, junior circuit, Under-17 circuit events that are being organized on a weekly basis here from the office. So super busy in all the functional areas. High activity level and a lot of things going on. Finally, before I pass back to Sven, if there are any of these areas where you have questions, I think where you would like more information, please do not hesitate to reach out either to me or directly to the staff involved in the areas. We are always very helpful, always very willing to have a We are always very helpful, always very willing to have a conversation and and talk with you about the things that's going on within the different areas here. And with that, I pass back to Sven.
Yes.
Good.
Thank you. Well, yeah, a lot of information. We are sending out also on very regular basis. We are sending out this information, however, we think that this kind of small podcast that we are organizing, that it's a good wrap-up of what happened in the last months. I think also a few points that even were not mentioned were our European juniors medalists that went to Malaysia for a training camp. We had 17, I think, that were going there. It was quite an organization, a very huge organization. So this is also things that we are trying to set up to make the development of our play and sometimes, as I call it, trying to close the gap with the Asians, because they are at this moment. And when you look at the prestations of the of our players that are quite far in front of us. So something need to be done and it will certainly also be a point within our strategic discussion, how to go forward with this kind of development. I forgot to say two things in my points. I think Victoria, and she is online, as Emma stepped down immediately as chair of our Development Commission. It's our new elected member, Victoria Zenova, who will be chairing this committee. Yes, it is committee, not commission, committee. So that's an important one. And then one that you could see last minute, it came out yesterday. It is that the Israel Circuit Tournament, the Israel Open, has been canceled. I think it's obvious if you follow the news with what happened there during the weekend and what is still going on. This brings me before coming to your questions to Brian and or to me, to what we have done the three last months. So if the slide can come up again. In August, it was quite a very, very busy period. We had European Para Championships in the Netherlands. The Netherlands, where good discussions took place with the organizer to have badminton again in 2027. And they had seven or eight cities that wanted to host. So I'm curious to hear who will be the final host that will be chosen. For the first time, major championships are under-17 in Vilnius, in Lithuania, really well organized. A cozy hall, brand new infrastructure, well done, Tadas. And your team, it was a great performance over there. Not talking about the World Championships that Badminton Denmark organized again. I think we only have a few countries, a few members in Europe that can organize major championships for the Worlds. It was just a fantastic event in a fantastic hall with a fantastic crowd this time, because it was sold out for the last two days and almost the third last day, it was almost very crowded. Excellent what we have seen there. September, as Brian said, we had the meetings, the BWF meetings, the CC meetings. In Malaysia, I went to a visit to the Yonex Belgian International. Alongside with that one, I also had with our major partner, with Yonex. I had a very interesting meeting over there. And October, as you can see, it's a very, very busy month. We could be away almost all the time, but we will not do it. It was also for the European Olympic Committees. They had also in Turkey last week and the last weekend, they had their general assembly. We participated online because going there, it's a bit of time that we have to look into and also the money that we don't spend it like this. But we also, but that's an important one. We have, if you can bring up the slide again, please, it's the European University Sports Association. Well, that's next week and I think that at least one of those who will represent us there, Zhao Matos, is here on the call too. Because we will receive an award from them because we are the federation that collaborated the best with them. So it's, I think it's an important award, also in the development of our badminton. Some anniversaries. Peter, I'm almost in Prague for the gala you organized for the 65 years of your federations. Congratulations already beforehand. And we have also Golden Anniversary, Greendans. Michael, I don't know if you're online, but Brian will go, come to Nook to have the celebration together with you, 50 years. It's fantastic. We will bring you a nice present. I will be at the French Open for one day, unfortunately, but I promised my French friends that I would be there. Last year, I couldn't be there. And the strategic meeting during two days, three days in Belgium. So this is all for October. We try to go around as much as possible within our membership. Also next year, during the European Men's and Women's Team Championships, we will go to Poland, to Lottz, Lottz, whatever, my Polish is not perfect. So we will be happy to be there. And also we'll try to go more often in the future during major events, organizing also the Boards of Badminton Europe during those events, that the board can see what is the core business of Badminton Europe and that we can also speak with you, the members that are organizing. So this for me concludes what we wanted to say. I think we are open for questions. We are waiting. Please.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for this meeting, today meeting. It's very important. It's very important to know. Oh, sorry, sorry. Who is Marek? Please switch off the sound. Yes, and I want to also thank everyone, every European member for the position about halt ban for Russian, Belarusian players. The last decision of BWF, of course, was very upset it for us. But we tried to work about operation framework and I want to ask you and everyone, our friends, to do everything what we can, that this operation work was really work operation framework. Because what I see in other sports, like fencing, they have operation framework where according to this framework, no one who supports the war cannot participate in the competition, official competitions, but in many official competition, facing participated athletes who who directly connect with military, military sports club, with Ministry of Defence of Russia, et cetera. And the control, it's very, very important for this and I want to ask everyone to help us in this, in this case, in this case. And of course, I understand the positions of BWF, but could be. And my question is if Israel, that these natural players will not appear in the tournaments which hold in European countries, can Badminton Europe to launch the ban on European tournaments for participating as these natural athletes in the future after February in the next year?
So, Alexi, I'm back now, I could hear. I put it, I had to put on a headphone. First of all, I can assure you that the players will not come in like this. They will have a vetting that before they will come in. So this is the first point, this is, yeah. So and if they can come in, if they go through all the criteria, well, only then they can be seen as a neutral player. What will happen if, even if they are there with a neutral player and they are breaching the criteria? What BWF told us so far was if they breach the criteria, they are out immediately. Yeah. So that's one thing. Your second question was about the, can we look at it next year after February? Yes, we will continue to look at it. And I think Richard Vaughan is also here in the call. Richard is our first contact point with BWF to discuss the framework. He has a lot of information every time he is discussing. He is coming back to the BWF Board members within the BEC Board and we are discussing this together. And Brian is sending the answers to our contact person of BWF. So yes, we are following this really carefully. It has been two major things of September in working. First, it was the framework, what we are talking now about. The second one was the organizational changes for the for the office, how to cope with that with an announcement today.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you all for support us and looking forward to seeing everyone in Kiev.
Well, Alexi, you invited me to come over, but unfortunately, it is
I understand, I understand.
Get there at the moment. Yeah, it's not that you can take a flight from Brussels or Copenhagen to Kiev at the moment. So it's a very long bus trip. So I think participation this year at your national championships, we will have to say sorry, but our heart is with you and with the fights that are going on for freedom. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you very much all.
And so our technicians, they could restore the sounds. They are very clever guys. Peter, I see that you have your hand up. Please take the floor.
I do, thanks, Sven. It's only a quick one and that's, I'm a little bit alarmed at BWF suddenly changing the data there AGM and the impact that that has on Badminton Europe and all our member associations beneath that. And this is a permanent move, you say?
Yes. Look, I think it was Jimmy in the beginning of the year that informed us that there was this move. In fact, it is the slot of our European Championships in April that has been taken by BWF to organize Thomas and Uwe Cup Finals or Sudman Cup. Yeah, and alongside with that one, it is the annual, the AGM for BWF. So how unfortunate it is to say, but also we had to discover it with a change in the calendar. And we were informed later on within the Board of BWF that this swap would take place. So it is in fact the continental championships swapped with a major event of BWF. And it's exactly the same time slot. So what we have done now as Badminton Europe, we took the time slot that become free. So this is how it happened. But the continental federations or confederations, better said, were not contacted for this. It was a top-down decision.
Okay. And one other question is the tournament management system. Is the plan that if it's successful, that becomes available under license to the member associations if they want it?
Yeah, I can answer that. It is the intention, yes, but it's going to be through bilateral agreement. So it's not some, it's not going to be a top-down. It's going to be, you know, a system that we will build. And we will then, you know, discuss with members to see if they could see the benefit of using it or not. I mean, because we are also aware that that obviously certain members are very familiar and happy, for instance, with tournament software. And that's fine. We also see that going forward as being the software that will be used in badminton, but we might be able to offer some services that tournament software doesn't. And if that could be a benefit for member associations and for tournament organizers, then the intention is that it's going to be made available. But again, it's an opportunity, it's not something that we are going to make a demand around, let's say. So it's not a top-down thing, it's bilateral agreement, that if you would like to use the system, we would like to make it available for you.
Okay, okay.
I don't know if Marek had a question. I could hear you over the phone when I was listening with the headphones. I don't see any hands up at the moment.
No, thanks, I'm in a car and it's trouble to ask question now.
Okay, very good, Marek, but see you soon, however. And so thanks for organizing the our first major event of 2024 in Lottz. So if there are no other questions, Brian, thank you. The audience, I see we are 31 people that participated today. We will come back to you. It will most probably be in the beginning of next year in January, where we will have a third town hall meeting that we will do. You can listen again to this town hall podcast if you want. It will be on our website and so you can take the information from there on. Thanks again to all who participated. I hope you find this interesting and wishing you very good evening and stay safe, all of you. Thanks.